Hello and welcome to an HGTV Candidates Forum. I'm Tom Wright and will be the moderator, asking questions in moderation here. With me tonight are the four candidates running for the at-large city council seats here in Hastings, the two open at-large seats. And so joining me here in studio are Mr. Ian Martin, Lori Brooks, Joanna Bayers, and Mr. Mark Vaughn. Thank you all for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
These are all my former enemies, but now I think we can be friends now, right?
It depends.
It depends. Depends on the questions, right?
Yeah.
All right. Well, here are the rules of the game. This is a forum and not a debate. Each candidate will answer the same question and be given two minutes to do so. However, the candidates may choose to use their two minutes however they wish. We were just joking about doing an infomercial. I guess if you guys take it that far, you can take it that far. Of course, we do hope they include the answer in their question, or the, yes, answer in there, but the two minutes is theirs and the other candidates cannot interrupt. And we do, we will keep it to two minutes. We do have a friendly "wrap it up" sign that the candidates will see when there is 10 seconds left. So, let's get started here. First of all, getting to know you all, for those at home that are not familiar. And let's start with you, Mr. Martin. Tell us a little bit about you, share your background, your experiences in education, all that good stuff.
All right. Born and raised here in Hastings. Graduated in 2005. I was active in choir, National Honor Society, peer court, and Young Republicans. I also went on to pursue a bachelor's degree from Metro State University in St. Paul in law enforcement. Graduated there with honors in 2008. During my college years, I interned with the Hastings Police Department and worked as a park ranger for the sheriff's office for a year. Currently, I'm a police officer in the cities. And hobbies, I love to fish, golf, landscape. I've got an old car and a Boston Terrier, Barry, that I love to walk around town. Also, I'm a preservation commission currently. And that's me.
Nice. How about you, Lori? What's your story?
My story is, I am Hastings graduate. I graduated in 1997 from Hastings High School. My family lives here, both my parents and my in-laws. And some of my past interests, I've been involved in a lot of different things like Student Bar Association and Student Council and a variety of different kind of leadership activities. I went to college at UW-O'Clare and I was majoring in journalism with a minor in political science. And then I went on to do my graduate work at William Mitchell College of Law and got my law degree. And when I got married, decided to move to Hastings and, well, moved back to Hastings with my husband. We bought a house in Hastings and we have one dog, Teddy. And some of my hobbies, I include zumba at the Hastings YMCA, and swimming and reading and also walking my dog, who is one of my favorite friends in the world.
Nice. Very nice. And how about you, Joanna?
Well, I'm originally from Ely, Minnesota. I moved to Hastings in 2010, where I bought a house here, my first one. I'm on the Public Safety Advisory Commission. On that commission, we've been able to help hire some of their police, our new recently hired police officers. We've helped with the fire department's bouya. And so that's been exciting. That's a way for me to get really into the city. My background is, I went to the University of Wisconsin Superior for my undergraduate in political science and legal studies. During those years, I traveled to Bosnia-Herzegovina, where I studied the aftermath of war and the government system over, during a time of war. I also played college hockey. I was a mock trial, or involved in mock trial, where I attended the national mock trial. I did an internship for Congressman Overstar in his Duluth office and his Washington DC office. After my 40 degree, I went on and received my masters in advocacy and political leadership, where I did an internship for Jeff Anderson, his Duluth City Council at-large campaign. I also did an internship for the Minnesota Organization on Fetal Alcohol Syndrome, doing policy work. And so after graduation, I actually moved to the cities and got a job with the Minnesota Organization on Fetal Alcohol, where I played a major role in successfully passing legislation for kids with fetal alcohol syndrome, to help get them services that they need to be successful. And that's when, 2010, when I was looking to purchase a house, I saw Hastings and thought it'd be great. Some of my hobbies include hunting, fishing, snowmobiling, four-wheeling, and playing hockey, which I currently still play hockey, and coaching.
Nice. Mr. Vaughn, let's hear from you. What is your story?
My story is, I've been a resident of Hastings for over 40 years. My wife Beth and I both graduated from Hastings High School. We have three girls. Mary is in the high school now, and Martha and Molly are twins that are in the middle school. I went to school down at Red Wing Technical College for arena and recreational facility management. Been working in cities since about 1990. My first city was Hastings. That's how I got working at the arena and parks and recreation. That's how I got into working for cities. I interned at the city of Rosemount. I worked down at the city of Norfield and the city of Apple Valley. But in the last 19 years, I've been at the city of Eagan, running the, in parks and recreation, but I run a civic arena, water park, adult sports, and I work with our youth athletic association. If I'm not at work, I'm at home. I like being outdoors, just like everybody else. It's Minnesota. You know, I'm with friends and family. I volunteer with the city. I've been doing that since we chose to come back, Hastings, Beth and I. I've been on the planning commission for six years, six years on the Parks and Recreation Commission, and I'm currently on the charter commission. And luckily, I was elected chair of all three of those. So it's been a good experience.
Great. Now, let's hear the story about you guys' decision to run for city council. And Ms. Brooks, you will start, get the honor of starting this one, your turn. Tell us about your decision and why are you running for city council?
I'm running for city council because I value being involved in my community. I've always been involved in my community and in various ways, whether working with several different nonprofits in the area, or just reaching out to my neighbors. So, part of the reason I'm running is because I value it. I think it's important. And I believe that I have some skills, legal skills, project management skills, that I can offer the city of Hastings as well. I also have a mentor and a friend who has encouraged me to run, has been working on me for a while and asking me when I'm going to run. So I finally made the decision this time to throw my hat in the ring. So that's why I'm here.
And how about you, Ms. Bayers?
When I first moved to Hastings, I fell in love with this community. I knew this is where I wanted to be. And that's when I made the large, or huge investment in buying a house here. And when, you know, after thinking about it, I realized that at local races, after working with the federal government and some state campaigns, I realized the city council level is where you can really see change, and you can see effective change. And so in some of my work, what we did with the commission is, we had a resident who called regarding a barbecue on the patio. There's an old statute where you're only allowed to have a barbecue if you live in a house of three or less dwellings. And he was like, "Well, I live in a quad, fourplex. Why does that matter? I don't have anybody above me." And so when we were talking to him, we're like, "Well, yeah, that makes sense." And we worked on it. We brought it to city council, we got it addressed, and we got it solved. And right there, I was like, this was great. Like, I knew this is what I wanted to do. We can actually make a difference for people. And so that's really why I chose to run for the city seat.
Mr. Vaughn?
You know, since I announced in May that I was gonna run for this, I've been out talking, listening, and connecting with the community. And it really hit home that I am home, and it kind of fueled the passion to continue this run. And I think that's what I liked about it. I just want, it's pretty simple. I want to keep creating community in Hastings. I mean, we all live here, we get it. We understand Hastings is different. There's something, there's a little niche about it, that we care for each other. And I want to continue with that. I think it's a good opportunity.
And now you, Mr. Martin.
All right. You know, I've built a house here last year and I don't see myself leaving at all. And I think too many times, young people lose sight of the communities they live in. And hopefully, with me even running, hopefully getting elected, that will turn on younger people to become more involved and not just have opinions on things they want done or seen. Encourage them that they can have a voice in the decisions that we make. I also value the small-town feel. I think, once again, everyone's going for bigger and better. And I've been here since day one and I really appreciate the defined borders we have, the cornfield in my backyard, and I want to retain that. I don't want to see Hastings grow too fast and just grow with every other city. I think it should be controlled, and I want to be a part of the development long into the future, so.
All right. Well, on to the next one here. And Ms. Bayers, you get this one. We're now going to talk about, break it down with the good and not-so-good when it comes to our city government. And we'll start with the good. If you were to make a list of the things the city is doing well, what would you say would be at the top of that list?
Some of the things I think have recently done well is their strategic planning. So, they've had, recent, had a bunch of studies that they were, that they did, including the fire study. And so one of the things is, we knew that the fire department, there was a lot of stuff that needed to be done, but they brought in outside people to conduct the study to assess what we actually need and what needs to be a priority. And then they worked at the fire department to prioritize some of those issues. And so I think when they're looking at a strategic move, bringing in these studies to have them done, to really have an outside look into what, you know, because we can all say this is what needs to be done, unless we kind of get an outside opinion sometimes, we kind of get sheltered to our own bias them. And so, that study, I think is something good that we did.
All right. Mr. Vaughn?
I think, you know, jumping on the bandwagon a little bit, our riverfront renaissance is a good thing. That's what our city is recognizing, that it needed some attention. You know, we're thriving off the bridge a little bit, but what I really like to see is a city recognizing, "Oh, we got a chance. Let's do this now. Let's do it the right way." I do appreciate, you know, public policy, it works. We're doing it strategically, we're planning ourselves out, we're not trying to do it all at once and make a big splash. We have to keep doing this. I think what Joanna said is about having a plan, and that's a good start. I think that we are doing the right thing there. So I'm gonna say right now, city government, Hastings is doing a great job on the riverfront.
Mr. Martin?
I would echo Mark's statement with the riverfront. That's an exciting thing. The Rotary Club taking the initiative to add the pavilion down there will also encourage people to use the riverfront, like so many other cities do. I also think our park system is fabulous. Our trail system is excellent. We just added the dog park, which I'm very happy about. I no longer have to drive to Rosemount and give my money to Dakota County. I can keep it right here in Hastings with that. I think we could use some work with the police department. I believe community service officers would be a valuable addition. Making transports to detox, animals to Rosemount, to the animal shelter. Currently, we're using a full-time police officer to do that, which lessens our presence on the streets, costs a lot of money. I think if we sat down and had a real talk with changing that policy with community service officers or even reserve officers, that could benefit the city as far as a safety measure, so.
Ms. Brooks, what is the city doing well?
I think the city has some really great people that are in charge right now as well. I think the city council itself is very well-run. I think the members care about their communities that they're serving. I think our city administrator is very good, has experience, working with, our previous city administrator is making some very positive changes. I appreciate all the officers that we've hired in the last several years and the change that's occurring in the police department with having a newer chief. I think that, I think we're doing a lot of things right and the riverfront renaissance as well. I think we're doing more things right than need fixing. So I'm very encouraged by all the things that have happened already and look forward to being a part of the things that need to change.
And now, talk about the things that perhaps need to change or need fixing. Mr. Vaughn, please lead us, you may start with that one.
I've been, as chair of those commissions, you get to help interview future commission members, and we need more involvement. I think we, I need more applications when I'm looking at it, instead of when there's one opening. I want to, I want to go through five, 10, 15 applicants, not just three. So I think we can do a better job of reaching out and getting more people involved, and maybe it's too big of a commitment. Maybe some more ad hoc committees that say, "Let's focus on this one area of the parks and let's bring the neighborhood together." I think we can be a little bit more involved, connecting the community that way and bringing in certain people. What I'm hearing out there, door knocking, people want to be involved, they want their input, and we just got to get some platforms for them to do that.
And Mr. Martin?
I guess kind of echoed, or I responded to the "what we need to work on" question earlier with the police department. I guess that, to me, is the issue I think needs addressing the most. I believe also our main corridor could use some beautification. A lot of cities really take pride in, you know, flowers, signs, banners, things like that. I think that the city, as well as the business owners along Vermillion Street, would also agree with that, and it would just enhance our community feel that much more, so.
There you go. Ms. Brooks?
I think that one thing, one issue we're gonna have to address, and it isn't necessarily something we need to change, but I think it is coming, is the Metropolitan Council and all the transportation issues, the, you know, are we going to be a part of the Metropolitan taxing district? Are we gonna have an express bus from Hastings? What are we gonna do with our transportation? I think that's something that we're going to have to face in the next several years because it's part of the priorities at the state level and the Metropolitan Council to see that expand into the Hastings area. So, I guess my opinion on that is that it probably will happen when they want it to and not when we want it to. So as a city council person, my job would be to be the best advocate possible for the Hastings. What it needs, who's gonna use it, and what it's gonna cost.
Where do you feel the city could improve?
Some of the things that, you know, I feel like I'm strong at is finding these efficiencies that we can be more efficient at. And one of the efficiencies is, recently, we just did, or we're hiring for some paid on-call firefighters. But we are still short the five on-call fire, or the five paid full-time firefighters. And I think if we looked at it a little bit more strategically, we could actually hire the five full-time, and that would help solve some of our staffing issues right now. Because if we hired from our paid on-call firefighters, we'd already get trained, ready-to-go firefighters. By hiring the 10 paid on-call firefighters first, we're actually losing money because we're not getting the immediate staff that we need because we have to put them through training first for a long period of time. And so I think just some of those efficiencies, and like what Ian had said previously, how our officers, if someone goes to detox, they have to drive to St. Paul when we have a Hastings, or a detox located here in Hastings. And so, that's an hour and a half, two-hour time, you know, away from, they're doing their job in the city. And so some of those, just those efficiencies that we could save money at, is some of the things I'd like to look at.
So now, we can, this question here with you, Ian. Like I said, you've all been campaigning since June, and I'm guessing you've talked to a few people in that time. I'm curious to hear, what have you heard from your constituents that you've talked to? And perhaps, and what has stood out to you from what you've heard?
The amount of gas stations we have. And I guess the answer that I've given is, you know, it's not the city's role to determine what business chooses to come here. I guess I've kind of turned it around in terms of job creation, enhanced tax base with that new business there, and, you know, just cleaning up the corner. You know, I think a lot of people too have brought up the lack of vacant, or the vacant properties we have in Hastings and the lack of movement on those properties. And there's things the city could do as far as purchasing, purchasing them, redeveloping them themselves. Also, more currently, when I've been talking to people, it's been the country club. What do you think of that? It's really, I'm sad to see it go. I love golf. I played there for many years. And I think the city needs to make sure whatever comes of that, they're a good steward for the community, whether it remains a golf course or gets developed into something else. Because that's a gem right in the middle of our city. It's been there for 50 years. So I think people are real concerned about the future of the country club, so.
How about you, Lori?
The thing I've heard the most is regarding the fire department, just concern for the staffing levels. And as Joanna already mentioned, with the fire report, the study that was done that backs up that statement that we do need more paid staff firefighters. Several people have talked to me about that and have been very passionate about it. So I don't know if it's just the neighborhoods that I've been walking in, I'm running into all the firefighters, or if that's just a very, it's a very valid concern. So I think it's something that has been the loudest. I've also heard a little about the country club, and also people concerned about the downtown renovation, you know, how that's, is that gonna bring tourism? You know, what is the outcome that we're hoping for and expecting as a part of that? So those are the, those are the main things that I've heard.
And you, Joanna?
I've heard a variety of issues, from state, federal issues to the city issues. Some of the ones that relate to the city are the speed limits, especially coming down from the bridge. You're coming down, it comes down 60 and then 45, but the 60 is somewhat still in the Hastings area. And so kind of, you know, there's people that live off sides of those roads and kind of making sure that maybe we should move it to 45. So some of those speeding, speeding zones, I've also heard about the fire department and needing another, actually a fire station. Had people had issues with, just because our district is so big and expands from Appton Alps all the way, you know, out. And so, and then we've had some transportation discussions about commuting to work or transportation within Hastings. Hastings is growing, it's expanding out. And so before, you could walk to get your prescription across the street or two blocks down. And now it's getting farther away. And so, some mobility within, within Hastings.
How about you, Mark? What have you been hearing on the campaign trail?
The first one I always hear is, "Get that bridge done. What, if you get elected, please get this thing open, four lanes." Wish I had some say in that, but I don't. I agree with them. Let's get the bridge done. But the second one that I really hear a lot is, "Let's just take care of what we have before we keep expanding." And that's the number one thing I hear. They say, "We don't need the best, we just need quality. Let's take care of what we got." And I agree with that one. And I think that'll be my focus, that, let's take care of our infrastructure first before we keep expanding out into new opportunities.
All right. Coming back to you now, Lori. If elected as a city council member, what part of the job do you think you would enjoy the most?
Part of campaigning I've enjoyed the most, and I think this would translate to the job, is just the number of different people you get to talk to. You know, you have your circles of influence, your neighborhood, your family. And this has been a really great opportunity for me to meet people that I wouldn't meet otherwise. And so I've really enjoyed getting to know other parts of the community that aren't part of my normal trail or journey on a daily basis. So I guess what I look forward to is, I know that with a public job comes a lot of public feedback, and so I look forward to that, both positive and negative. Because if people are giving input, it helps me as a public servant make a better decision. So I look forward to meeting more people in the community that I haven't met yet and talking with them about what's important to them.
And how about you, Joanna? What do you think you would enjoy the most?
You know, I agree with Lori with that. I like door knocking, I like talking to people, I like listening, but I also like knowing that you're making change and helping someone. And so, being able to influence and positively influence somebody in their life, if they have a problem, and you're able to help them resolve it right at the city. And if you're not actually able to help them with the city, but refer them to someone that could help them, whether it's a state or federal issue. And, you know, making those connections and so that we're all working, you know, our goal is to all work together. And so, making those types of differences is what I'm looking forward to.
I agree. Connecting with the community is fun. It's very exciting actually to listen to people. The best part I'm gonna like, when I, if I get elected, is I want to see results, and I want to see them tomorrow, but I also want to see 10 years from now, that, oh, I hoped. It's nice to see that now, what I approved on the planning commission of, oh, that's, I had a say on that. I think that's good. When you sign off on a plat, the official plat, I mean, that's, it feels good that, hey, I made a mark in this town and I'm giving back, and I think that's important. So that's what I look forward to.
Great. How about you, Ian?
I think just remain, or remembering Hastings is how it was, bringing that voice to the city council. I'm one for redeveloping what we have and expanding within the city on vacant lots, things like that. So, just remaining, kind of the, getting with the times, but, you know, remembering the past, basically. On the bottom of my sign, it's remembering the past and the future, and that's really kind of my view on things. I want to make sure Hastings remains the community that I remember and that it, we still have now as being small, friendly. Not many cities have that, and I want to be a part of retaining that, so.
All right. And on the flip side, I did get everybody right?
Yep.
I want to check now, because I don't want to do that. On the flip side, starting with you, Joanna. If elected, what part of the job do you think would be the most challenging for you as a city council member?
I feel sometimes, you know, sometimes it's hard to take feedback, I mean, not like negative feedback, and you have to remember, it's not always personal. It's sometimes just regarding an issue that you voted on, and just kind of separating yourself and taking it personally is tough. And so I think that's the toughest part about being in a public official role. And so that's one part that, you know, I'm good at taking criticism, but sometimes when it hits personal, it's a lot harder to take.
How about you, Mark?
I think the hardest part is this is in at-large positions that are open, and it's representing a lot of people and trying to make a decision that's best for everybody. It's gonna be hard on anybody that gets elected. I understand it's hard on ward members too, but the at-large, we need to represent everybody, and we got to take all that input, not take it personal as much as we can, and try to make the right decision. And you know, what's stand behind decisions too, that'll be important. So it'll be a challenge.
And you, Ian, what do you think would be the most challenging part for you if elected?
You know, I would agree with those guys. You know, and I see it in my daily job. Everyone has their own opinions, and in a lot of situations, building permits, things like that, the person thinks they're right. And it's, sometimes it's hard to strike common ground with those people. You know, I think that's a strength that I have, is finding a workable option for both sides. But it's really hard to, you know, vote against something or try to please everyone. You know, it's very hard. And that's what I would view as being the hardest part of the job, so.
And Lori?
I think I would agree with the public feedback part because I think a lot of times you want to get that feedback upfront so that you can make the best possible decision. But sometimes you get it after the decision has already been made. And in that's, in that sense, it's hard because you wish, well, if they, if people would have communicated to me sooner and given me this input, I could have used it in my decision-making process rather than having it after the fact or having the criticism come later, because now the decision is made and there's not much you can do about it. So I guess my, my hope is that people will give lots of feedback early in the process and participate in commissions and giving feedback to the at-large members so that they can make the best decision possible when they go to the meeting and have to vote.
And now, the next question, and I believe it's you, Mr. Vaughn down there, get to start this one up. And the question is, "How would you describe your leadership style? What kind of leader are you?"
I'm one that listens, and I think I let people get their input in, and then I process it, and I stick behind my leadership decision. That's what it is, and if I have to go back and educate them why I did that, I'm okay with that. So I think that's the kind of leader I am. I do it at work. I let people get their two cents in. I think that's important, to make sure that they're part of the final process. So that's how I'm gonna lead, is nothing but listening a lot and then make decisions, but stick behind my decisions, and then try to educate people why I came up with that.
Ian, how would you describe yourself as a leader?
I definitely lead by example. You have to walk the walk before you can talk the talk, and hypocrisy is gonna sink anyone, especially in a position as public as a city council person. You have to have a policy and stick to it. And whether that jives with one person or not the other, that's just the way it has to be. You have to take everything into account, hear all sides, and make an educated decision on who would benefit most, what would benefit most, things like that. So, that's, that's my, my style, so.
And how about you, Lori?
My leadership style, well, I guess I have taken the StrengthsFinder 2.0 test. And basically, my natural leadership style is that I like to get information, so I seek information from a variety of sources, whether it's reading what other people have done in other cities, or hearing from people about their suggestions. I think my, what I would bring in my leadership capacity is the ability to get a lot of information and synthesize that information into my final decision. So I have a lot of, I'm strong in critical thinking and analysis, but I like to have a lot of information from which to make a decision, and I think that would be very helpful in a leadership role in the city council.
And how about you Joanna?
I think there's several different types of leadership roles, and I've played several different types of leadership roles, from when you are, you know, a rah-rah, let's get this done, this is the way we're going to do it, and you take charge, to being a silent leader, and letting someone else step up, and kind of building the support around for that person who just stepped up. And so as a team on the city council, I believe sometimes there's times where you have to be the one to take charge. And there's times where you have to be the quiet one, where you can lead by, you know, supporting the person who is in charge, or trying to get them, you know, get support for the person who is leading. But there's different roles each time you play, and I think my background in the leadership, having a master's in leadership, it's a good time to, you know, you can play different roles at different times. And so I have experience in playing those different roles.
Great. And coming back to you Mr. Martin for this next one, what is your honest assessment on the Hastings City Council, the current council? And what, if any, items that they voted on that you disagreed with, if any?
I think they're, they're doing a great job. They've, they've been in there for a while. Our mayor came from our city council, I think he served from ninety-one up to two thousand six. So we have a great seasoned staff around the city council that, that they can draw from, as well as a, a good community that I believe is fairly engaged, hopefully will become more engaged. I don't really think that there's anything they've done that I don't agree with. I think the, the bridge, you know, they, they got that going. It, it got done faster than expected, so there's really nothing that comes to mind right now that I would, I would change, so.
And you Lori, what do you think of the current council, and was, if there, was there anything that you may have disagreed with?
I really enjoy and like the personalities and the people that are on the current city council, and I, I think that they're all people that have the city, city's interests at heart, and take their job very seriously, to represent their ward and the people of Hastings. And I live not too far from my councilperson, and I see her out walking her dog, and I'm walking my dog, and it's just, at the local level, it's neat to know the people that are representing you. Something that I said at the forum, which I would echo and repeat here, is just that the temporary sign ordinance is something that seemed to take some time, that I wouldn't necessarily, I, I don't think it was as big of a deal maybe, as the amount of time that was spent on it, because my, my understanding is that it was one particular business that was putting up some signs that weren't aesthetically pleasing in a certain area of town. And so rather than address that with them specifically, it seemed like maybe broadening it out to the whole community and making an ordinance about it, that's not maybe something I would have done, or would have approached that way. But that's the only thing I can think of, that I'm aware of, that I would have, I would do differently.
Okay. How about you Joanna? What, what do you think of the current council, and is there anything that they did that you disagree with?
I think the city council is great. I think they all are very caring, and they're very, they want to do the right thing, and they're very concerned about the city, and they make, you know, most, you know, they make good judgment calls based on the facts that they have and what they think would be best for the city. The one thing that it's not, I totally hundred percent disagree with, but maybe change a little bit, is that the recent salary increases that they just did. You know, they work hard, I think they deserve an increase, but maybe take it by steps. We still have some public services that need to be funded, and so I'd like to see that prioritized first before the salary increase. And so that's something maybe I would have done differently, doing maybe smaller steps to increase it, maybe, you know, a little bit this time, and, you know, the next time, a bigger increase. But we still have public services that I think need to be met first, including the firefighters, and so I'd rather have seen that done first. So I disagree with what they did.
Okay. Mr. Vaughn?
Real quick, I echo that. I think we should, probably should have took it in smaller steps on the recent increase on their salary wages for the positions. But the one thing, it's not so much the council now, it's the council, it's how we're set up for public process. I really want to get a little more opportunities to public meetings. If we're going to do a development, I want to make sure that that thing is in the evening, so people who have to get home from work can get there, and give opportunities for residents a better chance to voice their concerns, so we don't get caught. I go back to the Kinsimius Park one, and that one's a little bit of a stickler. I mean, I met with those residents and I understood, but the public meeting that they got to go to was not at six o'clock, and we just got to be out there, and we need to use each, we need TV here, let's, let's get this out there so people can know what's going on in our community. The radio station does a great job too, but we just need paper, just get everything to let people know what's going on.
Great. And let's see here, we're back to Lori here, just got to start this next one. What are your strongest assets that you feel would be of value to the Hastings City Council? What are your strongest selling points?
I think my strongest selling point is my legal background, just because this is a position that deals with laws and drafting laws and approving laws for the city. And I have experience reading a lot of case law against my will, and just doing a lot of work, reading cases, understanding how it impacts different jurisdictions at the federal, state, and local level. So I think that legal experience is helpful, when you're looking at drafting a law that you're going to put in place, it's probably going to be in place for a very long time, understanding how it impacts the people, how it impacts businesses. And just being able to think that way is a skill that is not easily developed. It was basically hammered into my brain. So I think that that is one of my strongest assets, as well as I love people, I'm an extrovert, I like talking to people, I would rather be out doing social things than anything else, which I think is very helpful when you're doing this kind of role. And I have some experience in the community, I know people, and I have, feel like I have a good handle on different parts of the community. So I think those are the things that I bring, that I bring to this, this campaign.
And how about you Joanna? What do you feel are your strongest assets that would be of value to the city council?
I believe some of mine is just my background in advocacy, you know, being a person who does effective change in representing people. I also think my background in government is going to be very, very helpful, as, you know, I understand how the government works. I understand the separate branches, I've worked in separate branches of government, and I've worked in all three levels of government. And so I think understanding how it all plays in, and how the city's role can play into the state and federal role, and vice versa, is a big asset.
And Mark?
Two, two assets, I think that I, I listen well, I'm approachable, but the biggest asset is what Joanna says. I work in this industry already, I report to a city council, I know what they're looking for, I try to prepare myself for that, and I think I'm going to do the same here. I can make an instant impact. I've been doing this a long time, I understand public process works, and that's a good thing, and I think I'll be able to step right in. I know the roles of what the city staff is, and what the current council and mayor are, and I think that's one of the assets I'm going to bring as experience.
How about you Ian? What are your strongest assets?
I'm, I'm a local guy. I, I'm well-connected in the city, I know a lot of people, and I think that will help me get out there and, and get some feedback, if, if people aren't willing to just give it up right away. I also think that articulating laws and policies is, is one of my strong suits. No issue is black and white. So you have to weigh the pros and cons of things, and make, make a decision that, that best suits the community or the business at that time with the information you have. I think a lot of people just have a agenda that they want to stick to. I, I don't have an agenda. I, I have an open mind. I, I want to see Hastings retain the, the community feel that it has, and make that even stronger in the future.
All right. Joanna, going with you on this one, it's a pretty simple one, but a pretty open-ended one, so you guys can take this wherever you want to take it. It could be one thing or a list of things. But the question is this, what does Hastings need?
Well, we need, we have a client enrollment in school, so we need residents to move here to increase our tax base and help our schools up. So we need kids to get enrolled in school. By doing that, you know, we need businesses, we need attraction to attract families and residents to Hastings. I think, you know, you know, Ian had mentioned about growing, and I, I do, I like the small town feeling of Hastings, but we just need to be smart about it and how we grow, and we need to attract the right type of residents and the right type of businesses. And I think by, you know, doing a strategic plan and looking at what we need, and by asking residents what we need, we could do that. And I think that's the biggest thing we need, is some input from the city or the residents on what they would like to see, what businesses they'd like to see come here.
Mr. Vaughn, what does Hastings need?
I think we, we need to continue our equation. I think everything Joanna just talked about, it's not just schools, it's not just businesses, it's everything coming together that makes us a strong town. Town, that, that's important to me, and I think we need to keep focus of that. Economic development needs some assistance. It can't be our only focus though. We need young families to get to the schools, but we need the support from Hastings Family Service. Those are helping those families get there. And I think, and we talk about transit, that's important too, but we got to recognize, are we going to be a suitcase town where we're going to commute to the cities every day and come home? Or do we want to be a strong town and have everything here, where people choose to live here, work here, recreate here? That's what we need to focus on, and I think that's all part of the equation. That's what I want to bring, is let's get Hastings, kind of what Ian keeps talking about here, let's bring that back to our town, and keep it, keep everything here as much as we can.
All right. And Ian, your turn, what does Hastings need?
I think the, the schools, the school numbers declining is, is an issue. I did a lot of research on that, and I, I really, I hate to say it, I don't see it getting better. Plain, plain and simple, people aren't having kids like they used to. The recession only exacerbated that worse. People essentially stopped having kids after that. So I think we need to, instead of looking at getting people here, we need to collaborate with school officials, the school board, things like that, and determine how we can save money, whether that's going to afford a week, you know, reducing the number of buildings we have, taking different measures to, to reduce the operational costs of the school, before we, you know, raise taxes, have more bonds, things like that. I also believe that senior housing is, is going to be an issue in the future. The baby boomer population, they're getting to the point where they don't need the houses that they're currently living in when they had a family, and Hastings is very unprepared for the amount of people that are going to need a different style of living in the future. I want Hastings to be a lifecycle community where you can be born here, raised here, live here, and, and die here, all in one. You know, I, I think people appreciate that. They, they don't want to move to St. Paul or whatever and live in, in senior housing, they want to stay in the city that they, they lived in and had a family in. So that is something that I think we, we need to take a focus on in the near future, and really take a hard look on what we can do to fix that.
Apparently you Lori, what does Hastings need?
I think Hastings needs a, a vision of what it wants to be in the future. I think it, we, we have a lot of different items, these individual items that we can work on, whether it's the fire, whether it's the downtown, a dog park, a new park, you know, cleaning up the main, the main sixty-one corridor. But I think that we need to decide what we want to look like in ten or twenty-five years, and work towards that, and sort of have a vision of what that looks like. You know, to me, when I think of Hastings in ten or twenty-five years, I think of it having, you know, really great prolific arts and artists, and having a really beautiful downtown, and people coming on the weekends to go to those businesses that are down there, basically being a tourist destination, where people come for the afternoon or for the weekend. I think Hastings can be connected, we could be better connected, where we have different efforts going on, like helping the youth, but bringing those organizations together to work together, so that we're making this a place that our youth want to grow up, go to high school, and go off to college, but then come back to, because they love it so much. So I think that we have to look at what we want to be in the future and work towards it, and, and use that as a way to determine what our priorities are going to be. And I think we have a lot of things that we could do, but I think that's the most important thing we should do.
All right. Well, now we are down to the closing statements. So we'll start with you Mark, and please tell us why Hastings should vote for you, and provide a closing statement, and also, and also include, may include any contact information if you wish.
Sure. You know, we talked about this today, we have a lot of amenities that a lot of towns would love to have. We got some natural amenities that people would love to. We need to continue with that and help sell Hastings going forward. I think I prepared myself, either through education or experiences, that I'm going to make a, a quick impact on the council, that I'm going to go in there with some new ideas, some fresh ideas, but be willing to work with our current council and find some solutions that are going to help us move forward to the next, next era that we're talking about. So that's what I'm going to bring. I think I got experience that's going to do that, and I'm going to ask for the vote on November fourth.
And Ian?
You know, I think it's, it's, it's a good time to run, and that's why I, I chose to run, and I think that if you elect me, I'm going to ensure that Hastings maintains the community feel that we have. I hit on it earlier, addressing senior housing, I think that's an issue that, that I would take a hard look at. Also, bringing back in, you know, the, the in-city transit system, you know, I, I said this back in the July forum with Tom Bullington, like the track bus service we used to have, I think that really needs to come back to town, along with the aging population needing housing, they'll also need transportation. What we currently have isn't suitable. It's, it's not local enough, and it's not personal enough to, to really hit the, the issues and, and needs that the residents will have. I also believe that just maintaining the, the riverfront Renaissance will, will ensure that people are going to come here and, and choose to stay here and, and end up making a home here, so.
All right. And Lori, how about you? Why should Hastings vote for you?
I think Hastings should vote for me, because I, I truly do believe in the people of Hastings. I, I know that this job is one that affects their lives, and any decision that I make is going to affect my neighbors, my family, my, my church, fellow church members. And to me, there's a great sense of responsibility in that, but also the potential for great satisfaction, knowing that I'm doing something for the people that are around me. And I've said that a couple times, that really my, the bottom line of why I'm running for city council is that I really do want to serve my community. And maybe that sounds old-fashioned, or maybe it sounds trite, but I truly do believe that Hastings is full of people that want to connect, want a better future for Hastings, want to see it grow, want to see it change, and, and also maintain the, the feel that we know each other, that when we see someone in the grocery store, walking our dog, that we know who they are, that people smile at each other when they pass each other on the road, even if they don't know each other. That's the kind of town Hastings is. I love it. It's my home, and, and that's, that's why I want to represent it, because it's great.
And how about you Joanna? Why should Hastings vote for you?
First, I want to say thank you Tom for having this. I believe, you know, I love the city. I do. I moved here, and ever since I moved here, I love the community, I love the people in it. And I'm passionate about public service work, and I've done a lot of volunteer work, and so nothing more, I wouldn't want to do anything more than, you know, help the city of Hastings and help the community members, and the city, this job would allow me to. And so coming with my assets and the background in government and background in, you know, teams, and, you know, being on team sports, I think I'd play a huge asset to the city. I'm not from here, but I come with fresh ideas, new blood, I'm a different, you know, outlook on how other cities you know, outlook on how other cities are ran. And so I think that is a huge asset to the council. And so I, you know, ask for your support on November 4th. You can contact me at 651-315-5568. You can send me a text. You can email me or visit my website. It's JoannaBayers, or www.joannabayers.com. It's J-O-A-N-A-B-A-Y-E-R-S. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for participating, and good luck on your campaigns. And these are the four candidates running for the two at-large city council seats here in Hastings. And we do have other forums to watch. I want to plug those as well. There is a state representative race, as well as the Dakota County Commissioner race. And you can find the schedule for all the forums, including this one, on our website at hastingsTV.org. You can also find these forums on our YouTube page. We're now on YouTube, YouTube now, so we can send those links out. And you'll be able to view it online as well. Be sure to get out and vote on November 4th. Polling locations and information on absentee voting can be found on the city's website at hastingsmn.gov. Thank you for joining us, and we'll see you next time.